Good evening, welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 13th of 2016. First sort of is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
We need to add?
With the addition?
Yeah, with the addition.
With the addition of, uh, new business of the Emory Mills Dam.
Okay, with the addition, yep, with Emory Mills Dam?
I second that.
Seconded, all in favor? Opposed? So that's gonna be E. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? No, call for vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, department heads and committee chair. Department heads, go right ahead, Mr. Chief.
Excellent.
No, I insist. Alright. Thanks. Hi folks, um, my name is Tom Cashin, I'm the Secretary of the Forestry and Conservation Committee, and I just wanted to update you as to what our, uh, agenda has, has been up to date. Uh, we had a meeting in August where, where the newly appointed, uh, group came together, and we have decided to work hopefully with the both boards of, uh, select persons in Acton and Lebanon to see if we can re-invigorate the discussion about making the Hibo-Hibo Road into a pedestrian trail usable by, uh, ATV's, responsible ATV riders, and snowmobiles in season and, uh, cross-country skiers, uh, open it up for seasonal use by townspeople. Uh, and the town clerk's office, Jennifer and Sarah have been very helpful in, in helping me with the file that's on, on, uh, in the vault that pertains to Hibo-Hibo Road, and I've sent that across to Paul Schumacher, and on, uh, next Tuesday, 9:20 at 7:00 PM, we're having a meeting with Paul, and, um, I was thinking of inviting you folks in, but it's probably a little premature, uh, because the committee itself hasn't sat down since we've gleaned our info from Town, Town Hall. Um, there was a large amount of correspondence in the file pertaining to discussions with Lebanon and Acton, and the problems that have arisen there with, with both towns. Um, Lebanon, as you well know, probably gated the entrance from their end, uh, and we were reluctant to do that because of some interpretation of law, and, um, we have the possibility of a small grant from Southern Maine Regional through the Maine Community Foundation, I think it is, uh, that could help us with some of the legal expense to make, you know, get some answers to some of these inquiries we have to make. Um, and I'm hoping we might be ready for an invite to you folks, or to a representative who would want to be, uh, sitting in on our meetings. The next one will be October 18th at 7:00 PM, and, uh, I'll keep you up to date as to what our discussions are, but I think by that time we'll have probably a pretty, pretty concrete idea of what we, uh, what our proposal might be to the two town boards to, uh, expedite this, or move it forward anyway. Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Steve?
Um, so, I'm coming forward tonight to you, uh, we're looking, we're looking at, um, a situation with our current tanker truck where it's, um, become, it's, it's coming into disrepair, um, especially where the tank is concerned, uh, for the apparatus. There's, uh, cracks in the tank, um, there's also, they're rusting, you know, the way those steel tanks work is they rust from the inside as well as on the outside, so really you don't have no way to know exactly how, how well it's doing, but, um, it's already starting to weep through the, the metal itself, the water. Um, so we, we brought the truck to Hartford's who does all, pretty much most of our apparatus repairs, and to have him look at the truck just to, you know, to look at the options, um, that we would have, and his recommendation obviously is that, because the problem is we don't know how long this tank is gonna last before there's a failure with the tank, and if, you know, it goes the way everything else does, it will always be at the worst time, as we all know. Um, two estimates to repair the tank are in the areas of twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars to replace that tank and repair it. Drive train wise, the truck's not bad, um, body, you know, body wise, cab wise, it's okay, but again, just the tank, which is the biggest thing we use that truck for, is what the problem is. Um, it also needs a clutch and some other maintenance repairs as well, um, but we're actually kinda timing is everything. Um, we have the opportunity, Rochester had just bought a new tanker truck and put their old tanker truck out to bid. Um, it's a couple of years older than our current tanker truck, but they've, um, numerically it's older, but physically it's, it's considerably younger. Rochester had always kept up with the upkeep of this truck. Um, they'd put a brand-new polytank in it probably seven or eight years ago, and these polytanks are lifelong, they don't, you know, they never rust, they're never an issue. Um, so comparing truck for truck, the one we have now, um, has an eighteen-hundred gallon tank and only a five-hundred gallon pump. Rochester's tanker is a three-thousand gallon tank and a fifteen-hundred gallon per minute pump, which is, um, on both sides of that is, is a lot, um, more feasible for what we would need to use it for, and would be, you know, better assistance for what we're dealing with now. Um, so what I'm coming forward is looking for the approval and asking for, uh, eight thousand dollars out of the, um, capital, uh, apparatus replacement fund for the purchase of the vehicle, and then seven thousand dollars out of the, um, capital reserve on the equipment fund in order to, um, equip the truck, outfit the truck, uh, you know, hose, appliances, and the things that we would need, where there are some differences between, uh, the current truck we have now and that truck in order to make everything, you know, meet our needs, so. So basically, you know, you, my goal is, understanding that we may not get another year out of the current tanker truck, this truck, based on all reports from mechanics and apparatus mechanics that I've worked with, um, the Rochester engine or tanker, um, driveline, frame-wise, body-wise, has all been completely maintained and updated and, you know, in getting, you know, several more years to buy us time to when we might be in a better position to look at replacing with a new, a new truck, um, I think it would certainly serve our purpose and give us, you know, a definite better window to be better prepared for, um, replacing that tanker down the road, so.
Looking at fifteen thousand?
Correct, fifteen thousand, and that would be everything we need to, to get it in service on the road, um, you know, for what we need.
I know when I was chief over there, which was five years ago now, uh, the existing tanker did, at that point, have a leak in it, and we had it welded.
Yeah.
So, and we did notice some other problems in there, so.
Right.
What you're saying is true, I know that for a fact, so. Um, I know we have some money in the cap fund, and I know we have the other money in the equipment fund, so, have you talked to Michelle about how to, if the money is available and whatnot?
Yeah, I talked to Michelle about it, um, you know, just to make sure that what, everything we were trying to do technically met the criteria of, um, what those funds were established for, and the funds are there. Um, matter of fact, what we're looking to take out would still leave those funds in, in really good standing, um, you know, for other things down the road that we need to do, um, as well as time goes on, but, yeah, the, the funds are there and, you know, it just, to me, to me to take, take the risk of a truck that who knows when you may have a tank failure, and to be able to buy yourself three, four, maybe even five years, who knows, um, is kind of, for that amount of money is, it's a pretty good bang for your buck, so.
And what do you think we can get out of the other truck by putting it out to bid or selling it?
Um, I'm thinking, you know, I've done a little research into that, um, and I think that it wouldn't be, the, the thing that's the good part about that tanker that we're getting rid of is it's got, uh, the Caterpillar diesel motor as opposed to, you know, another type, but, and that's actually what kinda makes it more valuable, because what'll happen is, is somebody will bid that, you know, I think we can probably recover at least in the lines of five or six thousand, would be my guess, to return back to the funds. Um, but as a tank truck, it, it's, to, to fix it, to be a tank truck would, you know, would be just too much money, but somebody could take that and put a dump, dump truck body on the back of that, or, or rack utility type body on there and, and, you know, and it would be perfect for that, so. I think we'd had, had one before that they'd gotten rid of similar to that, and it did, did very well on the, on the resale. Just to, to keep it as a fire truck and fix the stuff that's on it, that's where you get into the big money, so.
Any questions from the other two?
So you were saying it would be twenty to twenty-two thousand to replace just the tank?
Just the tank.
And you're trying to get a used truck that has newer components for fifteen thousand?
That's correct.
And that's just the tank? A new tanker is, a new tanker can run anywhere between three hundred plus.
Yeah.
York I know is gonna, is gonna be buying a new one, they're spending, I think it's upwards of six hundred thousand for it.
Yeah, pretty much for the, for the tanker equivalent of like what we're getting from Rochester, you're talking four to five hundred thousand dollars, so.
So that's something to think about down the road, as far as?
Yeah.
Five years down the road or whatever, but.
Absolutely.
The polytanks, I know from experience, are the way to go, you can't, I don't think you can buy a fire truck now with a steel tank in it.
Right.
These polytanks are half an inch, three-quarters of an inch thick.
Yeah.
So, what I would typically ask when buying a used car, why are they selling it so cheap?
Um, basically because it went out to the bid process, and, again, um, the, most departments buy new, so getting, getting somebody that, that's gonna buy that truck, um, as it is, is, is gonna be somebody like in our situation, that's kind of teetering on, on a bad situation, or it's gonna be somebody that's gonna turn that truck into something else, like a dump truck, or, or something like that. Um, so, when you, when you get rid of your old truck and you put it out to bid, you're kind of at the mercy of, of, um, the industry, and, you know, but for, for somebody like us, you know, it, it can be a great opportunity just to buy us a window of time, um, to better prepare down the road for when we can, you know, actually replace that truck, you know, because then, you know, if we do it right now, we set ourselves up right now, down the road, we're gonna be able to get that truck that, yes, we are gonna have twenty years out of, and, you know, and, at this point, we have other priorities that we're gonna be looking at coming into this year, this fiscal year, that are absolute needs versus wants, and, you know, so I, I don't wanna hurt us as far as, you know, to, to do that, but a tanker truck in a town where we have no municipal water supply is key to, to our every operation. We've got a lot of lakes and ponds, but wintertime they freeze, and, uh, having that three-thousand gallons, especially with the size of that truck, that three-thousand gallon tanker, um, on a fire attack, initial fire attack, you know, you're flowing with your initial attack line about a hundred fifty gallons a minute, um, through the typical initial quarter attack line, you can, you can do a lot of damage and buy yourself a lot of time with that, for, whether it's for property or whether it's for life, you know, safety and rescue. Um, so, there's a lot of elements about this truck that, you know, actually makes sense beyond the fiscal end of it, you know, especially when looking down the road towards, you know, what we're gonna need for next year, and then, you know, for three years out, five years out, um, I just, you know, I, I see it as a win-win situation, so.
Bill, any questions for him?
That fifteen thousand dollars is for a functional, working vehicle.
That is correct. It'll be in service, ready to go.
You know, the last time we did this, it was a truck, once again, from York, um, it was an engine to replace an ailing engine that they had up here, and it was a three to five year, I think it went three years. Um, that truck did end up losing its engine, but no fault from where it came from. Uh, that one went out to pump a culvert one night, one day, and they hit a frost heave and put the front axle into the oil pan, which fractured the oil pickup tube, which happened here in town, so, you know, I know there may be some people thinking, well, we've done this before and been down this road before, but, once again, that was no fault of where it came from or what the truck was, that was.
Right, I mean, there's always unforeseen situations, but the design of this truck is different than the design of what that truck was, as far as the way the entire, you know, the cross-members, the chassis, the frame, everything is, is a different situation with this truck, um, compared to that, and, you know, the frost heaves, obviously, a lot of them are blind and you don't see them coming, and, you know, it's, it's no fault of anybody, but.
Yeah, you just gotta be careful.
You just gotta be careful, so.
Ken.
Mike.
May?
You may.
Can you just reiterate what two accounts that you think those are gonna come out of, and, uh, did we talk to, you talked to Michelle about whether or not town meeting was needed approval, because I'm looking at some, I'm just trying to look at Article fifty-three as far as which ones were, were voted to appropriate and which ones were voted just to carry forward, but not appropriate, so I just wanna make sure for notes, which accounts each one is coming out of?
Um, there's two capital lines, the apparatus replacement line, and then?
Seven thousand?
What's that?
That's the seven thousand?
That's the eight thousand.
Oh, the eight thousand is the apparatus account?
Correct, and the seven thousand is the equipment, uh, capital equipment fund.
What's that?
Yeah, I would, uh, just, I guess I would just wanna double check in whatever motion you make.
Yep, I, yeah, I, I know he spoke to Michelle.
Did you speak to Michelle?
He actually, he actually spoke to me a week or so ago, and I did speak to Michelle, too.
So those accounts don't need to go to town meeting?
She said that they did not need to, so, which kinda surprised me, but.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the ones that, oh, no, she, she would certainly know.
She's the gurgle of the, of the.
I guess I didn't realize that you guys all had this conversation.
No, no, it's okay, it's fine, because it's, yeah.
Trust me, I wanna make sure we do everything.
Yeah, no, and it just helps if I at least understand what's going on.
Yeah, I definitely wanna double check it anyway, but, um, I mean, I don't have an issue doing it, I wanna, I also want Warrant Finance to weigh in on it, because I think, you know, we need their, their thoughts as well, so, I mean, we don't technically need their thoughts, but I want their thoughts.
So you want a meeting scheduled?
Yeah, I think we need to schedule a meeting with them, but it'd be nice, if, if we're ready to think about, you know, giving our approval, disapproval, or whatever, then they have something they can go on as well, Warrant Finance it is, so I don't know if we're ready to make a motion on this or not to move forward, but, um, whether you wanna think about it a little bit and let them do their thing, or, I mean, there's no great rush, I mean, we, the truck is sitting in Rochester, I guess, and, right, when's it ready to go?
Um, I actually have to, to go over after this meeting to meet with them, uh, with their, their deputy city managers proposing, based on the bids to the council, his recommendations.
Okay, I mean, the truck itself?
But the truck itself, um.
Did they, have they gotten a new one yet?
They do, they have their new one, uh, they're still in the training process, I don't believe it's in service yet, until they finish their training on it.
Okay.
So they're still actually currently using this truck that I'm looking at in service.
Okay, so we probably got fifteen, thirty days, whatever it takes.
You know, and I'm, yeah, I'm sure that, um, you know, that they're very interested in, in, in helping people that are local and around them as well, um, they'd rather see it go to somebody like us than, you know, that's really gonna use it for what it was meant for.
Yeah.
And plus, you know, where we do have mutual agreements and stuff as well, you know, with these other communities around, that it'll also benefit, so they're, you know, they'll work with us on that, that one, that's for.
I guess if we take a straw poll of this board, what do you, what's your thoughts?
I think it sounds like a good deal, but I also think that, like you said, Warrant Finance, I'd like to see what they, what they weigh in with.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, well, I think Warrant Finance, uh, Finance is important, is important.
Oh, yeah, definitely, okay, well, why don't we, uh?
Schedule.
Yeah, you'd, schedule a meeting with Warrant Finance, and if you would, Jennifer, get them to, to meet on it, um, some night that Steve is available to go.
Okay.
So, and you can basically tell them what you've told us.
Sounds good to me.
We'll see what they say, and then.
Bring it back.
I don't think this board is gonna, I don't know if they'll deny it or not, I don't think so, but we'll see what Warrant Finance says, you know?
Sounds good. All right.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to Old Business Library Walkway Bid.
So last week I let you know that, uh, we had one bid from Brick Block and Rock. Um, I met with Mr. Drummy, uh, Monday, actually, and we went over the design, uh, that he had in mind. Um, Ken and I also spoke about it, Elise was present, uh, when we did that today, we're going to be meeting with him, uh, again tomorrow at noon time, Ken and I, to make sure that we're all on the same page and, um, get ready to start the work, assuming you accept the bid as presented. I think it meets all of the, um, it will meet all of the requirements and the requests of the library, and Ken will make sure, he's gonna tie it into the siding, so.
Okay, when do we need to award the bid?
As soon as you do, as soon as we can get started. We have his insurance, workers comp, there were no other bids, checked references, he's met with Michelle.
Okay, so we do have a bid here, I think we read this last week, but scope of the work proposed, replace existing wood ramp and steps with granite and concrete product to include planters, in-front material to match existing hidescape. Uh, the quote on this was five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we had, how much approved it?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand approved at town meeting, so, it's under that amount, so I guess, do I hear a motion to accept? How much, Ken? Uh, fifty-seven, seventy-five. Need a motion to accept, uh, Brick Block and Rock to do the work?
I move we approve the, the bid.
Okay, up to seven, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
Okay?
I second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Nope, call for vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
All set to go? Next we have Fire Station Roof Bids.
I was hoping to have an answer to you by today, um, but unfortunately Ken and I's schedules didn't allow us to meet until today, and we were able to come up with, uh, some more questions. We essentially just went through and, um, you know, cross-compared one contract to the other to determine what the differences are, um, I'm in the process of checking references and looking for insurance, so, um, definitely by next week we'll.
Okay. Did you come up with, come up with any real differences, or?
No.
Okay.
There were a couple of minor ones, uh, you know, that one company, um, I can go through them real quick if you'd like, one of them used, um, six feet of ice and water shield, one used, um, not, one used six, one used nine, one was using felt paper, one was using synthetic, but it kinda weighed on which company was which, so it wasn't that one company was using all of the better stuff. Um, we had some que, we've still got some questions about the type of edge flashing for one of the companies to make sure that it's, um, more galvanized, not just in aluminum, so, we went through and made a list, um, I just wasn't able to get all the answers yet.
Great, okay. Moving on to New Business, exit interview with the auditor.
I, that's just.
You have nothing on that one, okay?
I don't, I wasn't there.
No, that's okay, yeah, we did, we did meet with our auditor tonight, uh, he has finished the, uh, the audit of the town, um, numbers are looking good, we have, well, we probably should get something from him, I guess, well, we have some numbers from him, let's schedule a time to, I guess we can go over a lot of it right now, I didn't bring my paperwork in with me.
I don't have my copy either.
Uh, trying to go off memory here, um, the undesignated fund balance as he had it was one point six nine nine, I believe, um, as of the time the audit was done, now we have voted to move two hundred fifty thousand of that forward, um, to offset taxes, and he explained to us a number of different things of what we should have, uh, you know, the, the three months worth of, worth of bills on hand, he stressed, and he stressed this a couple of times, that we wanna have a little more than that, because if you have a water event or a flood event, that could use up some of that money in a hurry, FEMA does not pay quick, government doesn't pay quick, state doesn't pay quick, so if we look at trying to recoup some money for that, so we need to have extra money for that, which we do have, so, um, you know, when looking at our numbers and whatnot, our projected income versus our expenses, everything was played out the way it should be, uh, we may have a little bit extra money sitting there, as far as undesignedated, but, once again, he, he did stress that that's not necessarily a bad thing, so, um, you know, we did tell him that we, we did lower the tax rate this year by thirty cents and put that money forward, didn't, uh, didn't really affect what he had to say, so, we're in, we're in decent shape, so, you know, as I said, the way the town's going and, uh, with, with the two folks at a primary in this, Michelle and Jennifer, um, good people to have on it, and they're doing an excellent job, so, so, that's, uh, that's kinda where we sit with the auditor, so things are, things are right in line, and, and he did get it to us in the timely manner, like we had said last year, we needed to get it in by the end, by, by September, so we do have it, so that's a good thing.
The only other thing that he had mentioned to me, um, and I was gonna ask if you guys were interested, once the audit's completely done, he has offered to come and do a, um, public presentation, maybe we can invite Warrant and Finance, have it at a, you know, a regular meeting, and, um, kind of go through a breakdown of the audit and just kind of explain, you know, how it works, and, um, a little more about town meeting, town government.
Good idea.
So, we'll schedule that, um, later on in the fall.
Yep, great. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, Winter Sand.
So I spoke to both of the road commissioners today and, um, discussed needing to go out for the, um, sealed bid for sand, this is the same bid as last year, it's still for three-eighths inch screened winter sand, uh, the only difference on this, of course, obviously, is the date this year, and also the per yard amount, um, they have more on hand than, than usual, um, I think because of the, the mild winter, so the estimated need is lower, but, um, both road commissioners have, um, agreed to this as it presents, I've, I've read it to both of them, uh, so with your approval, we'll get this sent out, and, uh, looks like we'll accept them until October twelfth.
Sure, I'll just read this over, just to let everyone know. Town of Acton sealed bid invitation, the town of Acton is soliciting bids for three-eighths inch screened winter sand, the town is requesting two bids, and said bids must be completed on the form below and returned to the Acton Town Hall, sealed, no later than four PM on Wednesday, October twelfth, two thousand sixteen, Town of Acton sealed bid, mention town administrator, thirty-five H Road, Acton, Maine. So we're looking for an estimate, let's see, on the bids, estimate needed between fifteen hundred and two thousand yards, and that's on, uh, one's for pickup and one's for delivery.
Yeah.
So, that's, uh, that's the two bid.
Yeah, that's all the guys asked for.
Yep. Okay.
Looks okay to send out?
I think it's fine, okay with you two? Yep?
Yep.
Great, okay, so we'll get that going. Old Sand Salt Building.
So, um, as I'm sure you and Bill recall, and I tried to catch Elise up a little bit today, um, Maine Municipal, um, since we started building the other new salt building, they wanna know when the, this one's coming down, we had been kinda told them October, um, so I spoke to both road commissioners about that today, and kind of, um, talked about which direction they might be going into as far as how we were gonna approach that, uh, they were both on board with, um, creating a bid to, to demo it, um, going out to bid to see how much that would cost to tear down, um, there were a couple of miscellaneous projects that, uh, they both feel like need to be done, maybe before that happens, uh, there were some minor gatework, some electrical work, um, and I was hoping that maybe the board could, uh, just set up a workshop to go over with them, um, those jobs and how they're gonna be handled, and who's gonna do them, and then maybe we could work on the bid at the same time, so maybe a four o'clock workshop sometime?
I was gonna say, you wanna try for next week?
Um, you have the, um, you're busy next week, you have the forestry?
Uh, yes, okay.
Following week?
Sure.
So I'll call them both and see if they're available.
Yeah, that is something we did tell MMA, we were gonna get taken care of and remove that building, so.
And from here, from talking to them, the, the other jobs are minor, it's just a matter of, you know, getting them done.
Yep, okay, Sandborne-Nason Road Cemetery.
I printed off, I think I gave you all a copy, and, I don't know if you just wanna read that, the little blurb about the, uh, Sandborne-Nason Road Cemetery cleanup?
Sure.
With the correction of that date, uh, shouldn't be September tenth, it should be the seventeenth.
Right, okay. Acton-Chapley Historical Society invites you to help us clean up, clean the Sandborne-Nason Cemetery on this Saturday, September seventeenth, from nine to twelve, the cemetery is located directly across from one eighteen Gavin Road in Acton. The cemetery has three veterans in it, including two from the Civil War, uh, driving directions one oh nine to Gavin, I won't bother going through all the directions, cemetery's on the left-hand side as you go in, so.
The very last sentence there are things they need?
Yes, let's see, below is a list of tools you needed, uh, bring gloves, a chainsaw if you have it, rake, leaf blower, saw, trash barrels, whoppers for cutting off, and if you have a pickup truck to haul off the, you know, some of the vegetation and the debris, so, which would be great, once again, that's Saturday, September seventeenth, that's his coming Saturday from nine to twelve. Okay. And Emory Mills Dam, let's see, we received an email from Marcel Bluen at the, um, Sanford-Paxton-Rex is where he works, but he's also one of the key, key folk with the dam, um, as you remember, I guess we talked probably quite a number of months ago, that the Emory Mills Dam, which is located, um, the Emory Mills Road, is that the name of that road there?
Mm-hmm.
Emory Mills Road is actually in Chapley, but we're one-third owner of it, so, um, that there was a, a fairly substantial leak at that dam, I know a year ago at this time we had talked about, uh, the water level on Mousam, and we had quite a number of complaints about it, partly because we hadn't had a lot of rain last year. it, partly because we hadn't had a lot of rain last year, this year it's even worse, but I think they must have gotten used to the idea that we haven't gotten any rain, because it's, I think the lake is probably lower than it was last year at this time, but there is a, there is a fairly substantial leak at that dam, not to the fact that it was going to wash the dam out, but of, something that needed to be addressed fairly soon. So, over the course of the winter, I know the coalition has been, been having meetings, and, and I've been to several of them, they got an engineering firm in to look at it and whatnot, but right now they've got another, another plan that's come to light, and I'll just read you this here that they sent us, so I'd like to call the meeting of the dam coalition for Wednesday, September seventeenth at eight A M., and that's just for the, for the members of the dam coalition.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth, September fourteenth at eight A M., in the conference room of the city managers in Sanford, meeting will be to update everyone on the newest approach to dealing with the leak at Emory Mills Dam, this meeting will ask to spend some money, upwards of three thousand dollars each, for Chapley and Acton, and six thousand dollars for Sanford, to make repairs that will stop or significantly slow the leaks from the upstream side of the dam, they'll also have a better idea of what the gates may look like, they're gonna be using a dive, a dive team from commercial divers out of Angor to do all the work above, this has been accomplished, after this has been accomplished, we can then look to see what the next step is with the process, hope to see you all at the dam, and so on and so forth. So that is a meeting that one of us is gonna attend, Bill's gonna attend that tomorrow, it may require us taking some money out of an emergency fund to, you know, to, to put forward for that, as I said, we do own a third of the dam, but the way the agreement reads is that anything done on the dam, Sanford pays fifty percent, and we pay twenty-five percent, twenty-five and twenty-five with Chapley, so, that's the, kind of the gist of that, so, yeah, looking at making some. We probably do need a vote.
Yes, so the, the dam capital improvement fund definitely needs a special town meeting, it's listed out.
Okay.
So when Bill came to me, we went to Michelle, and Article fourteen says to see if the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to appropriate and expend monies from the undesignated fund balance for purchases of equipment or to use as they deem advisable to meet unexpected expenses, and as emergencies occur during the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, maximum expenditure fifteen thousand, and the article was approved as written, so.
Okay, so that's what we got there.
Without a special town meeting, that's the line that you could make a vote to appropriate your money.
Yeah, okay.
If you so wish.
I think this, this meeting tomorrow is important for them, and it also, that dollar amount is substantially less than what the original estimates were.
Yeah.
When talking about repairing the dam as a whole.
Be lucky if that covers it.
Last year, yeah, last year, the dollar amounts were two hundred and fifty thousand plus, I believe, so, I mean, they, they've, seemed as though they've got an idea how they can, they can do it here with, with, with quite a bit less money, to be able to make it work, so, I guess, we need a motion to spend out of the emergency fund, is that what, the best way to call it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's undesigned fund.
Undesignated fund, but under the, under the.
Article fourteen.
Article fourteen, up to three thousand dollars to be utilized with the Emory Mills Dam, someone wanna make that motion?
I move that we, what, authorize the town to, what, pay up to three thousand dollars for emergency repairs on the Emory Mills Dam.
Okay.
And, that's it.
Okay.
I second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion on it? Nope, call for vote, all in favor, all opposed, okay, Bill, if you could just give us a report back next week, and we'll.
I'll do that.
See where we sit. Public comment, anyone from the public wish to, have anything to say to us tonight? Anyone at all? Nope, hearing none, we'll move on. Announcements, volunteers needed for the Recreation Department Cemetery Committee and the Road Committee, the rec, rec is coming together nicely?
Rec is coming together nicely, um, last call for soccer signups, last call, Friday was the deadline, but I think that it might still sneak one in, but, but really, this is the last call.
Okay.
Cemetery, although you've appointed two people, only one has been sworn in, the other one we have reached out to, the one that has been sworn in is ready to get started, she has some great ideas and some projects, so really would need someone else.
Can you get ahold of the other person, say, or is he?
Um, I've left voicemails, she's reached out, so we'll, we'll continue to try, but certainly if there was another person, you know, should, should that individual have something going on?
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have put a couple of phone calls out to, to another individual that I know is interested, I just haven't heard back from her.
So anybody else, Cemetery?
General Assistance Public Hearing, September twentieth, that is next week, yes, and that was gonna be at five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Right here, before our regular Selectmen's meeting, okay, flu shots available here, the twenty-sixth, and that is at one?
Twelve to one.
Twelve to one, so that's right here at the Town Hall, and town report letters are due September thirtieth, this is your fifteen day, well, roughly, warning that we said we were gonna give, so, yes, sir.
Before I forget, while we're on announcements, also, we'll be having an open house at the fire station, as the kickoff to Fire Prevention Week, October eighth, which is Saturday, from noon to four, so we encourage all to come down and meet the department and see the things we have, and there'll be all kinds of fun for the kids, too.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
I have one announcement for the library.
Go right ahead.
Uh, maybe two, starting next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, we're going to be doing a story and activity hour for infants to preschool with their parents and caregivers, we do have two volunteers that will be coming in to run that program, and once a month, we're hoping to have community celebrities come in and read a story, and then the second one is, we are hosting a table at the Apple Fest, which is September twenty-fourth, so you'll have an opportunity to register early for the Croc Fest Chili Chowder Cook-Off there.
Aren't you changing your hours, did I see somewhere that the hours were changing?
And the hours will be changing at the library effective October first, just slightly, you can check out our website for those, or the post office has listed those hours, I can rattle them off.
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Tuesday, eleven to four, Wednesday, nine to two, Thursday night, four to seven, Friday, nine to two, and the second and third Saturday, nine to twelve.
Great, anything else to come before the board? No, anything, Bill?
Nope.
Anything else, Lisa?
No.
Guess I will call for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, all opposed, great, thank you all.